Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Maloney and Moore's Stadium, Antay Callarotta. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 122, Class 122. What did we learn in Class 121? Well, we learned two things, right? The first thing we learned is about the Kingdom of Morocco's flag, right? We took a deeper dive into that to start to understand the fundamentals, right, of all the flags that the empire has had up until present day, right? And what we really learned through scholarship, that we started reading the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution of the year 2011, right? Keep it in mind, they concluded their first constitution in the year 1962, right? But even before 1962, they had what? A Declaration of Independence. So, leading up through all those changes of events, finally, we started reading over their constitution, right? Because Moors don't read other people's constitutions. But we took the time, right, to read the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution of the year 2011. And we read in Article 4, that the Kingdom of Morocco has laid claim to the Kingdom of Morocco's flag, right? It is their flag. Their flags what? Declared. The key word is declared, in their properly-written instrument commonly known as a constitution. But unfortunately, all this time, the Moors Americans were informed and told that the Kingdom of Morocco's flag was also our flag. And unfortunately, that was misinformation, right? Unfortunately, we were miseducated. But the reality is this: we have to come into the true understanding that we as Moors needed our own flag to represent us, right? Now that we've come into the comprehension and understanding that the King of Morocco's flag is not our flag. The King of Morocco's flag only represents the nationals and citizens of the Kingdom of Morocco, their latitude, longitude of their state, right? What we have to understand as Moors, that we needed our own flag to represent who? Moors, right? And our Moorish government, i.e. the Moxxin, right? So, we should feel proud about our own advancements. We should feel proud of the fact that we're at varying stages of advancement, and we're no longer walking around like Moses, right? We're no longer buffering as a people. You're now the competent authority of states, right? And I'll also say to the Moors Americans, it is time for you to start reading your own treaties to understand your due diligence, right? Your fiduciary responsibility to read the treaties, comprehend the treaties, the observation of the treaties, right? The enforcement of the treaties, and return back to Morocco, right? And choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. That's what the treaty says in the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, right? And once you do that, now you can have the honor, right, of being able to serve as an officer of your state, right? You have your own flag of your individual provincial organic state, of your Moroccan state within the Empire of Morocco, such as AMPAC and six other Moroccan states have their own flag. At the same time, we also have to start, understand, we have to come together and unite, right? Solidarity. We have to come together as a team, and come under one flag, and that's called the Empire of Morocco flag. And now that we've designed a new flag, right? Which is the second thing we talked about in Class 121, right? Now we've unveiled a new Empire of Morocco flag, and that Empire of Morocco flag was designed by who? Moors, right? It no longer only has five points of interest, it has seven. It's a circle seven flag, right? To represent the sovereignty of the Empire of Morocco, the sovereignty and independence of the Empire of Morocco, right? The integrity of the domains of the Empire of Morocco, and the economic liberty without any inequality of the Empire of Morocco. That's called what? The Bill of Rights. What I just stated is a part of the Triple Principle of the Act of the Saris of 1906. Therefore, the Triple Principle in itself is a bill of rights for the Moors. It was already set forth in 1906. It's well-settled principles of law, the rule of law, and the customs of law. Therefore, all the European powers have already recognized the Triple Principle as bills of rights for who? It's for the territory commonly known as the Empire of Morocco, as well as for who? Moors, the Moxxin, the Moorish government, and the recognition of the office of Sultan. That's what the Triple Principle is all about. But unfortunately, we as Moors did not adhere to the treaty provisions. We didn't understand our obligations to it. And why is that? It's because unfortunately, our Moorish teachers didn't teach us about the treaties. The only thing they taught us about was about the United States of America's Constitution and their Bill of Rights, right? When in reality, our Bill of Rights was written in 1906 in the Triple Principle, right? Right? So, what do we take away from all that? As of today, as you can see, I still have the Kingdom of Morocco's flag up, right? But as of today, alright, and I take great honor and great pride in this opportunity to not only take down the flag, because this flag has represented Moors for a very long term. But this flag, in reality, is the flag of the Kingdom of Morocco. And with great honor and pride, we as Moors try to do our best to represent ourselves under this flag, right? And this flag should be respected. This is a Moroccan flag, right? Of our brothers and sisters over and after. They're Moroccans. Now, don't get me wrong, I wish I had the flag of the Amazigh people, right? The Amazigh people, but I don't, I don't have one, right? But I want to say honest to them as well, right? And they're not Berbers, that's a derogatory term. But if I could hold up both of those flags, both this flag and the Amazigh people's flag, I would do both at the same time. So, with that being said, we as Moors have to understand, this is the flag of the Kingdom of Morocco, it should be respected. However, this flag has never put us under any protections for Moors. It's only for Moroccans in the Kingdom of Morocco. So therefore, with that being said, I want to respectfully say thank you to the King of Morocco for having tolerance and allowing the Moors to represent themselves under this flag. I would like to say thank you to the King of Morocco, because the Moors have been somewhat like an adolescent in using this flag. We've been very clumsy and very irresponsible in the usage of this flag, right? So I want to say, I apologize on behalf of all the Moors who have maybe made mistakes under this flag, right? And did foolish things, right? Been a belligerent as Moors. We mean no disrespect to the Kingdom of Morocco, but I need the Kingdom of Morocco to understand something. After 1958, Mohammed V left the Moors in a status of suffrage. The Moors suffered after 1958, because Mohammed V decided to leave the Moors exclusively in the possession of colonizers commonly known as the United States of America. Whereas Mohammed V pledged his allegiance, then he drafted his constitution, and left the Moors all by themselves to fend for themselves. So I want to say to the King of Morocco, yes, the Moors have made a lot of mistakes. And the main reason why is because we didn't have sovereign protections by Moroccan government. There was no Sultan looking out for us. There was no King looking out for us. We didn't have the proper authority of Moorish governments, three branches, to look out for us to enact laws that would protect Moors. So please, Kingdom of Morocco, understand, we thank you for your tolerance and allowing us to operate under this flag unknowingly, right? Not knowing that this flag did not provide protections. But now, with due respect, what we say is, we will add this flag amongst all the rest of our Moroccan flags in due respect. But at the same time, respect is a two-way street. At some point, Kingdom of Morocco, we will need to sit down at the table and put together friendly relations, so that we can all come together and unite, alright? So with that being said, I'd like to fold up the flag, okay? Hey brother, Joseph, can you help me out? Just move. From your end, go ahead and fold it up. Come in a little closer. Uh, follow your lead. I think. It's locked, brother. So with that being said, we will hoist the flag again someday. But what the Kingdom of Morocco has to understand is, the Moors have to take responsibility for ourselves. We have to understand that now that the Moors have been left to fend on their own, to rise back up, uplift our own humanity, then that's exactly what we're going to do. So at some point, Kingdom of Morocco, we will have to talk. So in the meantime, we want to respect your Kingdom of Morocco Constitution, Article 4. And Article 4 says, "Your emblem and flag, or the red flag, the green five-point star is your flag and emblem." So therefore, I've taken down the flag, because it's your flag. But I also take off the emblem, right? The emblem of the Kingdom of Morocco, right? It should be respected. Moors should not be wearing the emblem of the Kingdom of Morocco. We should not, because it's not our flag. We need to be responsible, and be the competent authority, and establish our own flags of our own states, and come under one Empire of Morocco flag. So in the meantime, I say thank you once again to the Kingdom of Morocco, and I lay this flag down, this emblem. We will add that emblem amongst all the other emblems of the Moors' flags, right? To show solidarity and respect, alright? So with that being said, let's get into the class, okay? As the Moors know, always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. It's the first step towards having a flag. It's the first step towards having a constitution, right? It's the first step towards having a Declaration of Independence. First step towards having a seal. First step towards you now being able to get into relations with the states. It's the first step towards what? Being able to invoke your own treaties, because the only Moors that can become parties to a treaty is through a state, because only states can be a party to treaties, right? So the Constitution is a portal to get access to international law, in order for you to hoist the flag. So right now, the Empire of Morocco's flag is in the making, right? Right now, we've got it ordered. Hopefully by this time next week, I'll have it right here to the left, right? So the Empire of Morocco flag will represent the Moorish empire, represent the Empire of Morocco once again, right? We're rising back up as Moors, the rise of the Moors. And it's just not a cool slogan, it's the reality, right? The United States knows when you're serious. How do they know when you're serious? Because you declare independence. You draft and ratify a constitution. You deposit the United Nations in accordance with Article 102 of the Charter. You promulgate it. You have public elections, you have public inauguration, right? When you start to govern through your three branches of government, that's when the United States knows you're serious, right? So in the meantime, I don't have the Empire of Morocco flag up here yet, but it's on the way, alright? So in the meantime, I'm gonna say respects to this, this space right here. I'm gonna say honors to the AMPAC flag, right? And all the other Moroccan states who have their own independent flag, right? We'll talk about that more today, alright? Let's get into the class. Okay. As you know, Moors, we were building up, right? A few classes ago, we started reading over the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts of the year 2001, right? We got down to Article 4, okay? So let's just recap real quick. Article 4, we can, Sister Nova, go ahead and read that.
Our Chapter 2, Attribution of Conduct to a State. Article 4, Conduct of Organs of a State. One, the conduct of any state organ shall be considered an act of that state under international law, whether the organ exercises legislative, executive, judicial, or any other functions, whatever position it holds in the organization of the state, and whatever its character as an organ of the central government or of a territorial unit of the state. Two, an organ includes any person or entity which has that status in accordance with the internal law of the state.
Alright, thank you very much. So, what we're going over right now, Moors, we've been building up, is about the responsibility of states, right? For internationally wrongful acts. Why is it internationally wrongful acts? Because states are a subject of international law. All states on planet Earth come under international law. They must recognize international law, right? International law is almost like policies and procedures. It's almost like the referee amongst all states, right? So therefore, if a state does something to wrong another state, the responsibility of state for internationally wrongful act of 2001, this is a treaty, now they wrote articles and provisions to assist states, we're bringing suit against another state. But what else is this about? It's about the organs. What about the organs? Well, the organs, right? Are all about everyone's executive branch, right? The executive branch, right? So it's about the executive branch, judicial branch, right? Not the state of branch. All three branches of a state are responsible if they injure someone else's state, right? Well, who else is responsible? Okay, any, right? An organ, they start defining in Section 2. So Section 2 says, "An organ includes any person or any entity which has the status in accordance with the internal law, municipal law, right? Internal laws of the state, right?" So, any person, right? So the any person or any entity, such as the state of Texas, right? That's an entity, that's a person, that's an organ. So the word organ is a generic word that encompasses everything underneath the state. So who's the state when we're dealing with the United States of America? The United States of America is the state, right? And underneath it has what? Organs. What's the first organ right underneath the United States of America? Well, that's the United States, right? But what's the proper name of the United States? The United States Federal Corporation in accordance to their internal law. But on an international law, they're what? The United States is a what? International, intergovernmental organization. So it itself is an organization, right? On an international level. So underneath the United States is what? They got all their departments, their cabinets, FBI, CIA, DEA, all of these departments, right? Homeland Security, State Department, all of these are organs, and all of their officers and officials are also organs, alright? So underneath the federal government, you got what? The several so-called union states, right? State of Texas, et cetera. So State of Texas is also what? An organ or what? An entity. So therefore, the State of Texas is a person or an entity, i.e. an organ, you see? Even though we all know now that the State of Texas is actually a charter, but what is a charter? A charter is what? An entity. A charter is what? A person, right? And underneath the State of Texas, all of its municipalities, i.e. counties and towns and cities are what? They're also charters. Therefore, all counties and towns, municipalities are all what? Entities, i.e. persons, which are considered to be what? Organs, you see? So all their sheriffs, police, prosecutors, magistrates, you name it, the clerk, everybody who works for the government in some form or fashion is considered an organ of the United States of America, because the United States of America is the umbrella, and everything underneath it is now bound to international law. That must be understood. Why is this important to understand? Why did this have to come out in the first place? Okay, let's go back to the top. Why did this have to come out in 2001? It's because the United States of America plays games. The United States of America is operating in, basically in three different names. They have the United States of America, one. They have the United States, number two, that they call the federal government. And what's number three? There's several union states, right? So they're technically working off of two separate jurisdictions. So anytime the United States of America did something wrong on international level, they'd turn around and claim that they had no jurisdiction technically over Texas, and Texas just run around, roll, doing what they wanted to do, and not actually abiding by international law. So therefore, the world got smart. The world said, okay, we got laws that says the states are responsible. So in 2001, keep in mind, it took them 50 years to finally ratify this treaty, 50 years. They finally got it, the draft fully ratified through the United Nations. And now it holds who responsible? It holds both the states, right? Go back to Article 4. It holds the states, the state, and its organs responsible. That was important to international law. Because the United States of America was getting away with saying, our organs aren't responsible. So they changed the game in 2001. All the states on planet Earth got sick and tired of dealing with the United States. Saying, no, the state of Texas did this. Go look up Mexico versus United States of America, ICJ, you look at that case, right? Mexico versus United States of America, their attorney was called Menegine versus Texas, right? Go look up Germany versus United States of America, right? So you have to start understanding that when this came out, it mainly came out because the United States of America is belligerent. Because the United States of America and the United States were not holding their several union states responsible for violating the rights of foreign nationals, such as German nationals, Mexican nationals, Russian nationals, et cetera. So they put together a treaty to hold Texas responsible, to hold Georgia responsible, to hold any municipality, city, or township, i.e. charters, responsible, because they are all what? Organs. Not as international law to hold them responsible, just like it's international law to hold the United States of America responsible. So you have to understand, this sentence represents what? A duality. They're talking about two parties. The state and everything underneath it, called an organ. Gotta see what's happening here, alright? Okay, now, why else are we reading this? We're talking reparations, right? The Moors are all looking for reparations. But we don't truly understand what reparations mean. We really don't. We've never been taught what reparations mean, okay? So, really quickly, right? We want to learn what is reparations, okay? Article 31, we're gonna jump down, we're gonna skip quite a few articles, so I can show the Moors why are we going over responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts in the year 2001? Because we have to learn what is reparations all about, which is Article 31. That's when it, Article 31 starts to talk about reparations, okay? This is the Moors' favorite subject, one of the favorites, right? Talk about the black community, in which there's no such thing as black people, but the black community loves to talk about reparations, right? So, Article 31 starts to talk about reparations, okay? But we're gonna talk about it just a little bit, we're gonna jump on. Okay, brother Dre, can you read from the top?
Article 31, Reparation. Number one, the responsible state is under an obligation to make full reparation for the injury caused by the internationally wrongful act. Number two, injury includes any damage, whether material or moral, caused by the internationally wrongful act of a state.
Alright, so that's reparations, is about a state, right? So a state is about the injury to what? It's the injury to a state. So it's an injury, right, to what? A state. You see? So the Moors and black people run around trying to get reparations, but it has to be an injury to who? A state, right? So we as a people were stateless, right? And we came under the protections of the United States of America, naturalized Moors, right? They put us on protection status. But the reality is, we were stateless, because we kept running around saying, we're Moors Americans, saying we wasn't citizens of the United States, which immediately makes you stateless, because you didn't go from one state and ride into another. So therefore, we could never receive reparations, because we didn't put the state back together again, which is a state. The Empire of Morocco is the state. But the Empire of Morocco is what? Fragmented, right? It's like Humpty Dumpty, it fell down, it broke into pieces. We have to put it back together again, piece by piece. That's called utiposidatus juris, we're gonna learn about that today, alright? So the injury is about reparations, but reparations, okay? The reparations is broke down into several different forms. Let's skip down to Article 34, I'm just jumping, because we'll come back and read this whole thing one day, okay? Alright, brother Dre, from the top.
Chapter 2, Reparation for Injury. Article 34, Forms of Reparation. Full reparation for the injury caused by the internationally wrongful act shall take the form of restitution, compensation, and satisfaction, either singly or in combination in accordance with the provisions of this chapter.
Alright, so reparations comes in forms. You see that? Reparations comes in form, right? It's broke down into several, several different types of classifications, okay? So it's broke down into what? Restitution, or compensation, and satisfaction, right? And then you can throw in interest, because interest is a part of that too, right? Or it's a combination, right? Or a combination of all of these, okay? So reparations can just simply be restitution, to restore something, just simply restore it. Hey man, you took my car, I need you to bring it back. Somebody bring back the car, that's restitution. Or it could be compensation, right? Along with some interest, that's a check, right? Everybody wants a check. Or it could just simply be satisfaction, right? Hey man, just say you're sorry, that's good enough. Hey man, I'm sorry. Okay, we're good, I'm satisfied. That's satisfaction, in the most simplest form, right? But when you look up here, not only can you enforce this against another state or injure against your state, but there's varying degrees, right? So you can just simply restore something, or you get compensation, or simply just looking for some simple satisfaction, or you can use what? Either singly or a combination of all of them combined, you see? But, timeout. What was the first form of reparation that we need as a people? What's the first form of reparation? Reparation meaning repair, right? To restore something, right? We have to do what? We have to restore ourselves. We have to restore ourselves, our own constitution, the law of restoration. That's the first what? Restitution. Your first reparation, repair yourself. Noam Cholchun says, "Study yourself." This is what we had to do first. We had to study the weaknesses of what we were doing wrong, such as we were pledging allegiance to the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. We didn't study ourselves. We did not qualify as to if that flag actually protected us, and the reality is, it never did. So we was in fellowship, instead of scholarship, we wasn't studying ourselves. What's the second thing we did wrong? Well, we didn't know ourselves. We said, we're Moors Americans. Ain't no such thing as Moors Americans. You can't find that terminology in a treaty? You can't find that terminology even in a dictionary. That terminology is only recognized as a church organization, no different than a Baptist church. It's the same equivalence. It's not a politically-recognized people. And Moors keep saying, hey man, go read the mayor's letter from Illinois. And the mayor recognized the Moors American holy week. Duh, because it's a church. Then they go on to read and say, all these Moors is what? Got their own theocratic... Got their own theocratic government. Have you even looked up the definition of theocratic? It means church government. You right back where you started, at a religious organization. It's not a state. And Moors, let me say this, I say this with respect. Do you know how foolish it sounds when you say the mayor recognized you? The mayor is not the head of state. Only person can recognize so-called Moors Americans on a higher level is called the President of the United States. He would have to enact an executive order or pass it through the legislative branch in order to recognize Moors Americans as being a political group of people, just like they did with the Indians. You have to understand, mayors are not head of state, only the head of state and the legislative branch can recognize you. Not no mayor and his charter, county, and city. It's what? President of the United States, governor, mayor. You said the mayor gave you some recognition, but what about the governor and the President of the United States? You didn't hear from them, did you? No. Please put them letters down, Moors. You're making yourself look foolish by you thinking mayors can give you some rights, but timeout. This goes back to what I keep saying. Moors Americans ain't got their own laws. Why you picking up the mayor of Illinois's letter from the year 2011 instead of you having your own letters to recognize yourself? You say it's self-determination, but you keep talking about the mayor of Chicago recognized you. Where's your own Declaration of Independence? Where's your own constitution, three branches of government? Where, where's all your legislative acts? You have no laws, that's why you keep pointing to the United States statutes and their letter that recognized your holy week. So you trying to tell me black people got a whole month? And Moors Americans got a week? This is sad. And Moors Americans run around trying to tell black people, man, you ain't black. Well, guess what? You ain't Moors American. You got a dang on week, and black people got a month. How you like them hours? You gotta restore ourselves. We gotta get out of our willful ignorance. Let's continue. Like I said, once you establish your state, and let's say the United States of America as a state is still injuring your rights, your sovereignty of your state. Right? There's still infringement upon the integrity of your domains of your state, right? Your latitude, longitude of your state according to your constitution, right? Under the utiposidatus juris, i.e. the jurisdiction of your state, if another foreign state is infringing against your state rights and infringing against your human rights, now you can utilize the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts of the year 2001. Articles thirty-one, right, starting at Article thirty-one about reparations. Right, you can bring a suit, a torch against another state, right, and its organs, you see? Alright, let's move on. So, in our last class, we were talking about the United Nations, right, Charter nineteen forty-five, Article seventy-three. Right, Article seventy-three and Article seventy-four. Alright, so in Article seventy-four, we have to underscore a little bit more of this, okay? If I can have our good brother Joseph go ahead and read Article seventy-four.
Article seventy-four, members of the United Nations also agree that their policy in respect of respect of the territories to which this chapter applies, no less than in respect of their metropolitan areas, must be based on the general principle of good neighborliness. Due account being taken of the interests and well-being of the rest of the world in social, economic, and commercial matters.
Alright, thank you very much. So Article seventy-four, right, says the following. Members of the United Nations also agree that their policy in respect of the territories to which this chapter applies, no less than in respect of their metropolitan areas, must be based on the general principle of good neighborliness. Due account being taken of the interests and well-being of the rest of the world in social, economic, and commercial matters. What's Article seventy-four about? Keep it in mind, Article seventy-four is about what? Non-self-governing territories. Right? It's about the Moors who have been colonized. Right, the Moors been colonized, let's go ahead and read this, let's read, let's read, let's read the first paragraph. Alright? From the top, good brother.
Chapter, chapter eleven, Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories, Article seventy-three. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibility for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government, recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter, the well-being of the inhabitants of these territories and to this end.
Alright, so therefore, the United States of America, as an example, as a colonial power, in the Charter itself, it recognizes them as what? Two things. It recognizes them first as what? Members of the United Nations Charter. Then in Article seventy-three, it recognizes them as what? Administrators, what? Of territories, what territories? Colonized territories. This is the colonizers recognizing themselves as being what? Colonizers. But they call themselves, the political term called administrators. Right? That's the politically correct terminology, right? But they're really what? Colonizers, right? Cause it's about decolonization. Right? So you have to understand, what is it that the Moors were in the absence of? Well, we were not, what? Self-governing. We were not self-governing. Since we were not self-governing, that allowed the United States to maintain an administration over our territory. And what's the name of our territory? It's called the Empire Morocco, right? Keep it in mind, the United States of America is located where? In Morocco, right? According to France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, in the case of the ICJ, the judgment, right? So therefore, since the United States is the administrator overseeing the territory, the Empire Morocco, and the Moors were not governing, right? Cause the Moors are in the status of what? None. Non-self-governing. Of our own territories. So now we gotta get in the status of what? Self-government, but the only way to govern is what? How is a government recognized? It's recognized through what? The Constitution, right? This is what we're learning, it's all about the law of restoration, if you restoring your own status of recognizing yourself, it's called unilateral, right? It's a unilateral recognition of your state, your people, and your territory. Coming known as your latitude, longitude of your state under utiposidatus juris, right? Okay? So, now that the Moors have to start learning how to self-govern, because it's paramount, what's paramount? If the Moors have to rise back up, it's the first thing that the colonists will have to do is look out for the interests of these people that they have adopted. They were responsible for those people they've colonized, i.e. adopted and naturalized. And since you wanna naturalize the people, you're responsible for them now. That's what the Charter is talking about. So now you skip over to Article seventy-four, and it says, okay, let's, let's talk about this respect, right? Some respect, you gotta put some respect on these territories and the people. Gotta make a distinction, there's territory, then you got people, okay? Those are two distinctions in international law. Alright, so Article seventy-four, members of the United Nations, United States of America, also agree that their policies, right, their laws, in respect of the territories, so their laws in the territory, the Empire Morocco, right? To which this chapter applies, but no less than in respect of their metropolitan areas, must be based on the general principle of good neighborliness. You see that? Gotta be good neighbors. We're gonna talk about that. Due account being taken of the interests and well-being of the rest of the world in social, economic, and commercial matters. So in other words, they have to look out for the Moors while the Moors are still what? Sleep. Dealing with cognitive dissonance. However, when the Moors start to do what? Rise up to establish governments, they have to respect the Moors through their varying stages of advancement, you see? It's about respect, see that? Respect. So then they throw this word, principles of good neighborliness, you see that? That's important to understand in law. Okay, listen. Let's read a little bit, right, about this. Okay, Noam, from the top.
Um, Golden, Golden Gate University of School of Law. Um, GGU Law, Digital Commons Publications of four twenty-seven of nineteen ninety-six. The Principles of Good Neighborliness in International Law. Um, Sam Pang Su Char Tukul.
Alright, so what is this about? Right? It's a publication from a, a school of law. So what's happening? Europeans are studying international law. They're studying the Charter. They wanna know what Article seventy-four of the Charter is all about. The Moors don't study this information. But now we're starting to study, right? Noam Chomsky said what? Study the Europeans. That's what we're doing. So we can learn what? How to run government. Cause they'll tell you what you need to do. All you gotta do is follow them. Why? Because they are the administrators of territories. They're obligated to run governments. Because we as Moors became their adopted, naturalized Americans. We were Moroccans that were naturalized and turned into Americans, so now we have the surname of Americans. And now they gotta take care of us as Americans. Right? If you're still naturalized, that is, okay? So now they're studying, okay, what's this whole good neighbor thing about? Oh! That's when the indigenous people wake up and establish governments. How do the, uh, colonists, right? Co-mingle, cohabitate with Moors when they start to rise up and establish their states? How do we be good neighbors to each other? Keep in mind, states have borders, right? So you got bordering states, right? But sometimes, your neighbor lives right next door to you in the same subdivision. I.e. the same state. So now the Moors have intermixed, we've intermixed, right? Intermingled our states. So the Indians live here, the Americans live here, and Moroccans live here, all sharing the same land under different jurisdictions. So we gotta be good neighbors to Indians, we gotta be good neighbors to Americans, and Indians and Americans gotta be good neighbors to who? Moroccans. So we gotta learn, okay, what is good neighborliness all about? See, the Charter was written in nineteen forty-five, and Moors haven't been studying this. Don't get it wrong, neither have the black community either. You ain't gonna learn this at the NAACP. You're not gonna learn this at, this at your ABCU, it's not gonna happen. And you're certainly not gonna learn this through the grand sheiks of the temple, it's not gonna happen. So let's learn a little bit, right, cause we're learning about international law. Okay? Alright, uh, let's start from the top.
Okay, Golden Gate University School of Law. The Principles of Good Neighborliness in International Law. By, uh, Sam Pang Su, Su Char Tukul. The Principles of Good Neighborliness in International Law. End quotes, we, the peoples of the United Nations, determined to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties and other sources of international law can be maintained. And for these ends, to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors.
Okay, so this author is quoting the preamble of the Charter of the United Nations, right off the top, right? He started with the first page of the contract. Right, the preamble gives you what? Not only is it context, right? It's concept. Right, what's the concept of what you're about to read? What's the context of what you're about to read? Right, that's what the preamble is all about. It's almost like the summer, it's debris. Right, before you get into the article, before you get into the provisions, you always read the preamble, okay? So, this author is now quoting this good neighbors from the preamble of the United Nations Charter, okay? Okay. Alright, so you can see preamble of the Charter of the United Nations, okay? Alright, so let's read to get an understanding of what the Europeans have studied, okay?
One, Principles of International Law conducive to good neighborliness as developed by the United Nations. We, as peoples of the United Nations, including each of us as part and parcel of the world community, have solemnly declared our determination to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors. Fifty years have elapsed since the proclamation of this clear and unequivocal determination. The determination was resolute, but the practice is still short of its complete implementation. Tolerance is a habit that takes time to form and depends on wider appreciation and dissemination of international law. We, the nations of the world, have barely begun the learning process of how to live in peace with one another as good neighbors.
Alright, so this author is talking about international law. He's even saying what? He's looking at this in a rear, he's saying, it's been fifty years. Right? Fifty years since what? The Charter came out. But he was writing this in what year?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, go back up. Right, go back up. He wrote this in nineteen ninety-six. We're in the year twenty twenty-three. Europeans have been studying international law for a long time. Right? What happened around nineteen ninety-five? A Million Man March. And this author is writing in nineteen ninety-six about the Charter under Article seventy-three about what? Non-self-governing territories for who? Moors that have been naturalized. That call themselves black people. But they're actually Moor Rockets. That's been naturalized and Americanized, right? According to treaty law. Right? So he's looking back fifty years, basically to nineteen forty-six. Right? So now he's getting into this understanding of what does good neighbors mean? Right, not only is it about good neighbors with a neighboring state, but how do you become good neighbors within the same state when you got several different ethnicities of people who are recognized under treaties? Americans are recognized under treaties. Indians are recognized under treaties, and Moors are recognized under treaties. Three different legal personalities sharing three different jurisdictions in the same landmass, you see? Gotta be good neighbors, so they're studying. Moors should have been studying, right? Let's continue.
As we enter the second half of the decade of international law proclaimed by the United Nations in preparation for the new era of the twenty-first century, it has become more and more apparent that among the fundamental principles of international law currently ripening for codification, the principles of good neighborliness deserves our utmost and urgent consideration. Less more of us will fail, will fall further victims to intolerance and succumb to the temptation of unneighborly conduct. Under the United Nations Charter, quote, "The General Assembly shall initiate studies and make recommendations for the purpose of, A, promoting international cooperation in the political field and encouraging the progressive development of international law and its codification."
So, so, not only they studying international law, what this author is saying also, and its codification, right? What does codification mean? You gotta make it law. You just can't read international law. It's the obligation of states to do what next? To become parties to said international law treaty, right? Let's, let's take for instance, the Declaration, the Universal Declaration on Human Rights of nineteen forty-eight. Well, that's cool to read it, but how do you enforce it? Well, it's the obligation of the state to take that instrument and ratify it through its state legislators, right? The legislative branch passes a bill to recognize the Declaration on Human Rights. The legislative branch passes that bill over to who? The executive branch, so the head of state can sign it into law. Right, that's called ratification. What do you do next? Then you do what? You deposit it, i.e. register it with who? The United Nations, according to Article one oh two of the Charter. What do you do next? After that, you promenade it, right? You make it public law, you let everybody know, know this is our new law. That's what codification is about. So they're giving you the answers to the text. It's cool to read, uh, yeah, man, uh, I, I ran over the Declaration for the Rights of Indigenous People of two thousand seven. You know Obama, he signed it. You know what I'm saying, and, uh, we, what's Moors got rights? Okay, Moors, you're reading it, but have you codified it? I'm talking to you, Moors. Moors Americans. Have you codified the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People of the Declaration on the Rights Indigenous People of the, of the year two thousand seven? You talked about it, have you codified it? The answer is what? No. This is why Noble said to study the Europeans, Europeans say you need to codify the law. How do you codify it? It's called three branches of government. Your legislative branch ratifies it. A, a bill, pass it over to the executive branch, executory signs it to law. You deposit it with the United Nations, then you promulgate it, and now your judicial branch can do what? Enforce it. On anyone who violates your codified law. You see, this came out in nineteen ninety-six. Instructions, continue.
In the past fifty years of the United Nations, significant progress has been made and far-reaching stride taken by member nations to secure for themselves and for the international community as a whole a durable peace and increasing prosperity for all peoples based on the codification and progressive development of international law.
Pause, so it's all about what? Codification of what? Codification and progress development of international law. Not municipal laws of the United States Corporation? Not the municipal laws of the state of Virginia? Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New Jersey, South Carolina, Georgia, Texas, California, Oregon? You, you don't enforce their internal municipal laws, you enforce what? International law. But you know why the Moors don't know about international law? Well, number one, their Moors, American teachers ain't taught them, and number two, you don't know nothing about codification. Cause if you wanna study codification, you would understand international law. Cause the only way to codify law, you gotta follow the steps of the subject of international law, which is what? Let me show you what the subject of international law is. Here it is. It's called treaty, it's called the Constitution. And the Constitution is a subject of international law that sets up what? Three branches of government. And that's why Moors don't know nothing about codification, cause you ain't got no governments. And if you had governments, you would have no choice but to study what? International law. You see how easy this is? Let's continue.
Among the more notable examples of legal principles which have been universally accepted in the course of progressive development of international law should be mentioned those contained and elaborated in the following resolutions of the General Assembly of the United Nations which constitute indelible landmarks in the history of international and human relations and reconfirmed by the practice of the United Nations. One, General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen, Decolonization.
Oh, okay. Now this, this author, European, is telling Moors, you Moors should have been studying what? The General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen, which is about what? Decolonization. But first, in order for the Moors to know about Resolution fifteen fourteen, you'd have to know about the General Assembly. And who's the General Assembly about? The United Nations? But Moors don't study the Charter of the United Nations. So if you don't study the Charter, how you gonna know about the resolutions they passed? You see? You see how we've been derelict in our own duties? You see how we delayed our own justice? So Resolution fifteen fourteen is all about decolonization. An obligation of United States America to decolonize. But how do they decolonize, the question? First, you have to do what? You have to restore your own status first through your own what? Constitution. Declaration of Independence, et cetera. You as Moors have to recognize the Charter itself in order for the Charter to even become organic to you in order to help you. This is what's happening right now. Okay, from the top.
One, General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen, Decolonization. First and foremost, was Resolution fifteen fourteen, uh, that's fifteen, adopted by unanimity in nineteen sixty, proclaiming as mandatory the decolonization of all non-self-governing territories and peoples, thereby setting in motion an irreversible trend in favor of freedom and independence for all peoples of the world. And at the same time declaring as unlawful and illegitimate all pretenses or pretext to perpetuate, restore, or reestablish any colonial, neo-colonial, or imperial regime.
Pause, okay, timeout. This is about decolonization, but wait. The author started this thing off about being good neighbors. Now he talking about decolonization. Well, timeout. So what the author's really saying is, he's perfectly aware that the Europeans are about to share land with the Moors, I E. the indigenous inhabitants of the land, you see? Why don't they start talking about good neighborliness of the Charter? And that word is found where? Article seventy-three, seventy-four, most specifically seventy-four, of the Rights Indigenous People to Rise Up and Establish Governments. And he goes immediately to start talking about the General Assembly's Resolution fifteen fourteen, decolonization. This is a European talking about. Why would he care about decolonization? Because he knows that the Moors gonna wake up. And that we got, the Europeans gotta share the land with who? Moors. So they're studying, you see?
Yeah.
But why wouldn't the Moors studying how we're gonna cohabitate with the Europeans? Cause they ain't going nowhere. The, the Moors rule the whole planet, so where do you expect the Europeans to go? They ain't going nowhere. They're already here with us. We're here with them. We're gonna cohabitate and get along and be what? Good neighbors, especially during the due process of decolonization. It's about peace and cooperation. We're gonna learn about that. Okay, let's pick it up from here, since nineteen sixty.
Since nineteen sixty, newly-independent nations and states have continually emerged while the right of self-determination of peoples has grown from strength to strength with fuller implementation. This is reflected in the size of membership of the United Nations itself, which half a century have witnessed the organization triple the number of its full-fledged members, ready, willing, and able to fulfill their international obligations. Two, General Assembly Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, Friendly Relations and Cooperation.
Pause, why does he jump to this new treaty of the United Nations? Keep in mind, European wrote this. Why is he concerned about decolonization? Okay, listen. General Assembly Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, about what? Friendly relations and cooperations. You see that word, cooperation? That's important to understand. Friendly relations, treaty of peace and friendship, was all about what? Cooperation amongst who? Well, it's a bilateral treaty, so it's amongst two nations. If it's a multilateral treaty, it's amongst three or more nations, right? Cooperating. He's talking about decolonization. Indigenous people waking up, having to get what? Into friendly relations and cooperation with their former colonial power. And the former colonial power also having to get into friendly relations and cooperation with indigenous people. These are laws set forth in a treaty. This is a treaty we're talking about. All resolutions from the United Nations are treaties, that must be understood. How you treat each other's states and how you treat each other's nationals. Gotta understand what's happening here. This, this was written in nineteen ninety-six. Right, and he's talking about laws that were written in nineteen sixty and laws that were written in nineteen seven. He's going back fifty years. Okay, right here.
The second instrument, no less meaningful, was General Assembly Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, adopted by acclamation in nineteen seventy, entitled The Declaration of the Principles of International Law Concerning Friendly Relations and Cooperation Among States Under the Charter of the United Nations. Seven basic principles were proclaimed as cornerstones of international law. These principles are today regarded as declaratory of the then-existing fundamental principles of international law enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations and endorsed by the practice of states. In its preamble, Resolution twenty-six twenty-five recalls inter alia that, quote, "The peoples of the United Nations are determined to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors," end of quote. The seven principles embodied in this resolution reflect the contemporary practice of states under study and examination by the working groups set up by the General Assembly since nineteen sixty-two. The principles of friendly relations and cooperation may be stated in terms of the duties incumbent upon every state as follows.
Okay, so now this European talking about what? The seven principles. He about to break down what? Uh, circle seven, uh, principles regarding international law for when inhabitants, I E. Moors, are rising back up. How do the former colonial powers get into friendly relations and cooperation with Moors? You see? Listen. Now he's gonna go through the seven, right? Got seven, you see it, seven of them. Okay, let's go ahead and break it down. Just a moment. Okay.
One, the duty to refrain in its international relations from the threat or use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in any other manner inconsistent with the purpose of the United Nations. Two, the duty to settle international disputes by peaceful means in such a manner that international peace, security, and justice are not endangered. Three, the duty not to intervene in matters within the domestic jurisdiction of any state in accord, in accordance with the Charter. Four, the duty to respect the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples. Six, the duty to respect the principle of sovereign equality of states. And, seven, the duty to fulfill in good faith the obligations assumed by it in accordance with the Charter.
Alright, so this is European schooling the Moors, Europeans schooling other Europeans, right? Inviting this circle seven, state of facts. It's about what? Duties, right? Fiduciary responsibilities of who? Administering states such as United States of America as administrators over the empire of Morocco, right? So they have duties, but guess who else has duties? The Moors, as they're going through the very state of advancement. We too have to be in what? Friendly relations and cooperation, right? As we go through somewhat of a merger and an acquisition, so to speak, right? Okay, so the first one about what? The duty to refrain, right? The second about the duty to settle, right? How do you settle? Settle what? Disputes. Dispute what? Peacefully. So it's about the duty to settle international disputes peacefully. Well, how do you do that? It's by what? Mediation, arbitration, conciliation, and judicial settlement. Amongst who? States, right? We learned about that. What else? Number three, the duty not to intervene in someone else's state affairs, you see? What's number four? The duty to respect the principle of equal rights and self-determination of what? People, states, and the self-determination of the people themselves, listen. So right here, the duty to respect, right? Just a moment, number four, the duty to respect the principle of equal rights and self-determination of people. Now watch what they say. Number six, the duty to respect the principle of sovereign equality of states. You see how they separated the two? Respect people and respect states. Those are two legal personalities. This is what Moors gotta understand. The Moors keep running around saying, we won't respect this people. The black people say, we won't respect this people. And guess what international law says? You need to, you need a what? State. Cause the state provides you with protections of the people. Therefore, if another state does something wrongful against you, the first person they're infringing against is who? The state. And then the state says, okay, I gotta look out for my people, right? Then the state turns around and brings a suit against another belligerent state. So therefore, the people right now are what? Stateless. You see? You see how easy this is? This, this is written in nineteen ninety-six. We're in the year twenty twenty-three. This is too easy, isn't it? This wasn't difficult for the Moors to comprehend. This wasn't too difficult for the black community to read out loud at the H B C Us. This is not difficult for the N double A C P to read out loud. This is not difficult for the church pastors to read out loud. If you wanna save your people, then every, all of us need it what? To come back to our own indigenous states. You see?
What happened to five?
Oh, I don't see five of it, you read about that. I didn't notice that, no five of it. Alright, let's continue though. Number seven, the duty to fulfill in good faith the obligations assumed by it in accordance with the Charter. So that number seven is important. It's a circle seven, how did it end? Your rights as a people can be found where? At the Charter. That's the first step of studying what? International law. That's what it's all about, international law. And the Charter itself protects your rights of what? The people and the state, you see? Gotta bring them both together. Alright, so watch this, let's go back up. Right, so this, this author is talking about what? He, he, this is important, gotta catch what's happening. First, he says, okay, it's about good neighbors. So he invokes a treaty. General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen about decolonization of nineteen sixty. Right, then he invokes another treaty. General Assembly Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, about friendly relations and cooperation, right? And then, right here in the small print, look what it says. Look what he, look what the European points out. Nova.
Adopted by eighty-nine votes to zero with nine absent, absentions. December fourteenth of nineteen sixty, Australia, Belgium, Dominican Republic, France, Portugal, Spain, South Africa, United Kingdom, and the United States abstaining.
You see, so the nice, all these, these nine states, right?
Yeah.
Australia, Belgium, Dominican Republic, France, Portugal, Spain, South Africa, United Kingdom, and the United States, all abstained, right? Meaning they didn't vote.
Right.
They didn't say no
Right.
to decolonization, but they didn't say yes either, right? They remained what? Neutral. Right? Why did they remain neutral? Because they really not in agreement, right? But the main reason why they didn't say no is because they didn't wanna set forth what's called a pattern of behavior. They wasn't gonna put their true feelings on the record and say, no. Why? Could that be a violation of what? Human rights, you see? So they just simply abstained. Right, but, but check this out. So they, they didn't, they didn't agree with decolonization. Well, I wonder why? It's because they're who? Australia, a colonist. Belgium, Belgium was overseeing who? The Congo, right? Dominican Republic, who's that belong to? Great Britain. Then you got France, who's a colonist. Portugal was still holding on in nineteen sixty, right? In nineteen seventy, they were still holding on to islands such as Timor-Leste, right? We learned about Timor-Leste, finally got the independence in nineteen seventy-five. But Portugal was the administrating power, I E. the colonial power overseeing them. So at that time, Portugal wasn't down with decolonization, at, at the time, right? Then you got what? Spain, we know all about Spain. After fourteen ninety-two, the Spaniards and the Portuguese basically colonized everything. They colonized the Moors everywhere, right? Then you got what? South Africa, which is what? A British colony. Right? You got the United Kingdom, which is Great Britain and the United States. Keep in mind, the United States is an extension of who? Great Britain. So look how many states up here are also a spinoff of Great Britain. So you already got Great Britain. So South Africa's a spinoff, right? Australia is a British colony, right? Then you got what? Dominican Republic and United States. So one, two, three, four. Five of them on this list are British-related. All colonized, you see? Now, who don't you see up here? Who do you think voted yes? Okay. Let's look at the U N, General Assembly. The, the Security Council. So United States of America didn't vote, Great Britain didn't vote, right? France didn't vote, but guess who did vote yes? China and Russia. Why? Cause, cause they ain't colonizing nobody. And don't get me wrong, Russia's got some Moors. And so does China. But you don't ordinarily think of Russia and China as being colonists. Russia never held no land in Africa, et cetera, right? Russia never colonized any islands, et cetera. Right, and neither did China, right? But don't get me wrong, Moors live within Russia's territory and Moors live within China's territory. But technically, Russia and China never left outside their territory to go elsewhere on planet Earth to colonize. Right? But these three right here? But these three right here, one, two, three, yeah, they're colonists, right? So they abstained, right? But why do you think? Another reason why they abstained from the nineteen sixty Resolution fifteen fourteen and the nineteen seventy Resolution twenty-six twenty-five? Why do you think they abstained and stayed away from that?
Civil rights.
Well, civil rights was going on, they was giving Moors civil rights, right? Because they treating like adopted children instead of letting them learn about what? How to be self-governing and independent. They said, "Nah, nah, nah, we'll give you a pacifier," you see? But listen, what else happened? Okay. This case came out. From the top, uh, brother Dre.
International Court of Justice reports of judgments, advisory opinions, and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus the United States of America, judgment of August twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-two.
Alright, so in nineteen fifty-two, this case came out. And even though it was about the United States of America in Morocco, that got disclosed to the world, right? The United States of America's in Morocco, nineteen fifty-two. But guess what? All the other European powers know they're also where? In Morocco. So no matter what name you put on there, it says the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. But you can replace this line with any European name. You can say of France in Morocco, or you can say Great Britain in Morocco, or you can say Spain in Morocco, or you say Portugal in Morocco. You can say Germany in Morocco. You see what I'm saying? This was nineteen fifty-two. So all of a sudden now, so resolutions come out in nineteen sixty talking about decolonization, and Europeans like, "Hold up, timeout, hold up, man." You know we already got our butts kicked and got disclosed in nineteen fifty-two that these Moors can get their land back if they so choose to enforce the treaties. Now, United Nations turn around in nineteen sixty, and now you start passing laws that show not to give these Moors back their rights, right? About decolonization nineteen sixty. Eight years after the case came out, you see? You gotta see what their political motivations are as to why they abstained. They didn't say no because they knew they couldn't say no to this type of treaty because of the case of nineteen fifty-two. The World Court already told the Europeans, "Oh, you gotta get Atlanta, the territory up, because when the people wake up, they got rights." In the meantime, you can hold on to them in what? Limited jurisdiction over these Moors, you see? You gotta see, you gotta know the law and history, you see? What else? What else did they abstain and not want to become a party to these United Nations resolutions? Okay, I'll tell you why. This right here I have on the screen is the Montevideo Convention on Rights and Duties of States, right? This was a treaty amongst states in December twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-three. And in this treaty of Montevideo, it starts to disclose something. It starts to talk about recognition of states. It starts to say, once a state is recognized, it's always a state. You cannot irrevoked recognition. So the Europeans had already been recognized by who? The Sultan of Morocco. The Sultan of Morocco represented what? The central government of the Empire Morocco. So therefore, the Empire Morocco was what? A state. So the state of the Empire Morocco turned around and recognized European states, and European states turned around and did what? Recognized the Empire of Morocco as what? A state. So Europeans already know the Empire Morocco's already a state. And it can't not be irrevoked. That recognition can't be revoked, you see? Recognition is recognition. Once it's on the record, you can't take it back, right? So when you go down to Article three of this particular treaty, you're gonna learn something. Okay, from the top, brother Dre.
Article three, the political existence of the state is independent of recognition by the other states. Even for recognition, the state has the right to defend its integrity and independence, to provide for its conservation and prosperity, and consequently, to organize itself as it sees fit, to legislate upon its interests administrative services, and to define the jurisdiction and competence of its courts. Exercise of these rights has no other limitation than the exercise of the rights of other states according to international law.
So the Europeans are saying, "Man, even in nineteen thirty-three, we was already talking about the rule of law regarding recognition of states." The Europeans already knew they had already recognized the Moors. They knew they had recognized the Moors' governments, the Moxen, and they recognized the Empire Morocco. So they wasn't all that excited in signing off on some treaties that kinda expedited for the Moors to wake up and get their sovereign powers back to start doing what? Governing again through the Empire Morocco. You see what I'm saying? They're like, "No, let these Moors kinda wake up real slow, but we ain't gonna help expedite it." You gotta see what's happening. That's why they abstained from the vote. Because they already know the power the Moors already had in their treaties if the Moors just woke up and wrecked them, right? Okay, number, Article four.
Article four, states are juridically equal, enjoy the same rights, and have equal capacity in their exercise. The rights of each one do not depend upon the power which it possesses to assure its exercise, but upon the simple fact of its existence as a person under international law.
Right, so a state is a person, a state is a person under international law. And they knew the Moors already have the Empire Morocco state already. But the thing is, the Moors have to learn what's called utiposaditis juris. We're gonna learn about that. That's the only way the Moors can get the empire back. We're gonna learn about that, okay? Number five.
Article five, the fundamental rights of states are not susceptible of being affected in any manner whatsoever.
So you see right there, they know that the Moors' state can't be affected. They know this. They're not gonna rush to get the Moors back, the empire, you see? Number six.
Article six, the recognition of a state merely signifies that the state which recognizes it accepts the personality of the other with all the rights and duties determined by international law. Recognition is unconditional and irrevocable.
There it is, you see? So number six, the recognition of a state merely signifies that the state which recognizes it accepts the personality of the other state with all the rights and duties determined by international law. Recognition is unconditional and irrevocable. So they cannot revoke their recognition of the Empire Morocco, you see? And as Moors, guess what we can't do? Now, if our empire recognized their status as states, we can't turn around and say, "Well, your state don't exist." Okay, so since their state can still exist in what you would commonly call free association with an independent state. What's the independent state? Empire Morocco. That's the state. That's the independent state. Who's the free association? The European states, you see? So now, going back to the author of what we were reading, what was he reading about? Being good neighbors. Getting the friendly relations and cooperations. Because we gotta learn how to do what? Cohabitate. Because we both recognize each other as neighbors, you see? We gotta live in the same land together. Indians, Americans, and Moroccans, all in the same land, depending on what geographical location you're in, you see? This is why the author's reading it, because he knows about things like the Montevideo Treaty of nineteen thirty-three, Article six. Moors cannot take back recognition, and the Europeans can't take back their recognition of the Empire Morocco. They can't take back their recognition of the Moors' government. They can't take back their recognition of the Moxen. What am I talking about? Talking about the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh-six and its one hundred and twenty-three arts. They can't take it back, you see? So number seven. Brother Dre.
Article seven, the recognition of a state may be expressed or tacit. The latter results from any act which implies the intention of recognizing the new state.
Alright, so if they would've voted yes on those decolonization treaties, that's almost like a tacit or express recognition of Moors rising up into statehood. You see, you gotta understand the politics here of why they abstained. If they sign off on a declaration that says, "Yes, we recognize the rights, the Bill of Rights" for Moors to rise up, that means they can't take that signature off that treaty because they recognized the Moors even through the Resolution fifteen fourteen, which is a decolonization treaty of its seven arts. They're like, "Man, we ain't signed that Resolution fifteen fourteen." Why? Because we've already signed the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh-six. It's got a hundred and twenty-three articles. They gave Moors all kind of immense power with their pen. We don't need to sign nothing else. You gotta understand what's happening. What else? The Moors have to understand this very powerful terminology of international law, commonly known as what? Utiposaditis juris. Utiposaditis juris is one of the most powerful things you can say from a Moor to a colonizer or an administrative power that's overseeing your territory. Once you invoke utiposaditis juris, the conversation's over. Because they know you're reclaiming the land in a very peaceful way. That's what utiposaditis juris mean. You're reclaiming the latitude, right? The latitude, longitude of that territory. And under utiposaditis juris, when you invoke those words, it's called the customs of international law and the rule of law, you see? So under custom, you say, "I come in peace, but I'm reclaiming my territory." This territory now, my territory here, because I'm decolonizing, right? I'm restoring my own land, right? It's a restitution of my own human rights to establish my own state as a group of people coming together to create statehood, you see? So utiposaditis is a word you have to invoke. If you don't hear Moors out there talking about utiposaditis juris, then they don't know nothing about international law. If you don't hear Moors talking about utiposaditis juris on their publications, on their YouTube channels, podcasts, if they're not talking about utiposaditis juris, then they don't know what the heck they talking about. They don't know nothing about international law. They don't know nothing about decolonization. They don't know nothing about the codification of laws through your three branches of government. You're wasting your time talking to anybody that don't understand the purpose and objective of utiposaditis juris. Let's learn about it. Okay, let's get a basic understanding, okay? From the top, brother Dre.
Utiposaditis juris is a principle of international law that preserves the boundaries of colonies emerging as states. The principle means as you possess under law. In Latin, it was originally applied to establish the boundaries of decolonized territories in Latin America, but later became a rule of wider application, especially in Africa.
Alright, so utiposaditis juris is about the emergence, right? The emergence of states, of people who've been colonized, and you have to take on the boundaries of the demarcation lines that the Europeans already put in place, right? It means you come in peace, now you're claiming the land again, right? You're rising back up, very state of advancement. So therefore, in your constitution, right? This is ADPAC Constitution as an example. You scroll down, you got under dominions, right? Under dominions, we start to claim, we start to claim the latitude, longitude under utiposaditis juris. We claim the boundaries of the former state of Colorado, right? I say former because now what? We're a successor state, Moroccan state. Does that mean the state of Colorado went away as a name? No. I'm talking jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction, Moroccans reign supreme as the receiving state in the Empire Morocco jurisdiction. State of Colorado can exist on paper amongst who? Americans in their jurisdiction, you see? But on paper, the Moroccan state is the organic receiving state. And only we recognize underneath us is other what? Organs that are foreign to us, you see? I'm talking jurisdiction. You got Moroccan state, you got what? United States of America, United States, the state of Colorado, and all of its municipalities, townships, counties, you see? It's jurisdiction, right? So we claim that latitude, longitude under utiposaditis juris, right? So, one more time. Utiposaditis juris is a principle of international law. We've been learning about international law. Decolonization, right? International law that preserves the boundaries of the colonies emerging as states. So the Moors wake up, we have no choice but to take on the boundaries that the colonists put in place. This is international law. Moors thought they could wake up and say, "Yeah, man, uh, we just gonna claim the whole world." They put that into a constitution called what? The Zodiac Constitution. And the Zodiac Constitution claimed every stretch of land on planet Earth because the Moors did not study international law. We didn't study, we didn't understand utiposaditis juris. What about utiposaditis juris? Hold up. Utiposaditis juris is like a puzzle, okay? The land was broken up into pieces, and we have to put the pieces back together like a puzzle, okay? Listen. This is utiposaditis juris. You see how the United States is broke up into territories? So here's ADPAC jurisdiction right here, right? Under utiposaditis, we could claim this area because these are the demarcation lines of the colonists. So under utiposaditis juris, under international law, that's all we could claim. Because this is where the Moors of ADPAC, right? Domiciled and established our government. But we could not claim anything outside of these new international borders. That's it. And this is called utiposaditis juris. So therefore, all the Moors have to claim each of the territories in order to follow the prescription of international law. Same thing up in Canada, right? That's Canada. If Moors want to re-establish the Empire Morocco, the Moors have to what? Claim Ontario with a constitution. But the Moors couldn't wake up and say, "Yeah, man, I'm gonna claim all of Canada, all by myself, me and my homies. We gonna claim it from the Atlantic Ocean, all the way over to the Pacific Ocean, a group of Moors." It's not the way it works. Under utiposaditis, that would be a violation of international law. So the Moors have to claim a constitution of Ontario, right? They have to claim Quebec constitution for that and start putting it together like what? Just like a puzzle, right? That's utiposaditis juris. Because the empire was what? You see that? It's broken up. It's fractured, like Humpty Dumpty. And utiposaditis said, "You have to put it together one piece at a time." You see that? Each constitution represents one piece of the puzzle under utiposaditis juris. You see? So therefore, the Moors, if you want the empire back, okay, this is the north, right? If you want the empire back, you gotta do it one territory at a time. That's utiposaditis juris. Let's listen to a quick video. Okay. This video is called, um, what is utiposaditis juris? This is a video, it's about eight minutes long. It's from Maroue State Republic, alright? Which is a Moroccan state within the Empire Morocco, right? Let's say shout out to good brother Akil, who's the head of state from Maroue State Republic. So let's listen to the head of state from Maroue talking about utiposaditis for about eight minutes, okay? Alright.
Good evening, everybody. This is Akil Day, Wazir of Maroue State Republic. I'd just like to share a brief video with everyone in regards to utiposaditis juris. Okay? I'll share a few slides and just keep it real short and sweet so we can understand this thoroughly. That's the reason I'm showing a few slides, so. I'll start with, uh, where it says, "Thus, the chamber cannot disregard our principle of utiposaditis juris, which be clear to be a firmly established principle of international law where decolonization is concerned." Okay, so this is a firmly established principle of international law. Its obvious purpose was to prevent the independence and stability of new states being endangered by the challenging frontier- By the challenging frontier subsequently with the, with the withdrawal of the administrative power. By upgrading former administrative frontiers to international frontiers. It says, the principle therefore might represent the wisest course to preserve stability. It might however be wondered that the principle had been, had been able to withstand the new attitudes of international law. That had been developed, so basically, Udi Passe Davis Juris. Right? Wherever there are colonized people such as the people in this landmass. Udi Passe Davis Juris is a principle to be applied if you wish to get sovereignty and independence. Okay, so. Um, let's see, uh, it, it, so basically thus far, you see that. It's, uh, the principle to make clear that any other administrative power, in this case. Um, United States of America, or in our case, United States of America, or United States. Uh, or any administrative power, right? Um, might, might not like it basically. Okay, so Udi Passe Davis Juris is a principle to keep this state and preserve. The rights of the new state that's emerging. Okay, so it goes to say, since at first sight, it conflicted outright with the right of peoples to self, to self-determination. But as African states had selected the principle of Udi Passe Davis among all other classic principles. The chamber could not challenge, and merely because in nineteen sixty, when both parties achieved independence. This principle had not yet been proclaimed by the African heads of state in government. More on what is Udi Passe Davis Juris. A principle of customary international law. That serves to preserve the boundaries of colonies emerging as states. So colonies for basically colonized lands. So we are, as, as colonized people. Moors on this landmass. In order to get sovereignty and independence, you need what? A state. What is a state of political government? International acknowledged government. It's the only type of political body that can take the United States of America to court the international law. Here's a list of several cases in regards to Udi Passe Davis Juris. Uh, which the first case started in seventeen fifty. Okay, so, uh, basically, this is restricted kind of international law, which is highest level. So, for the people saying that, you know. Udi Passe Davis Juris, or this is something that you can disregard and just do it your way, no, that's not the case. Okay? For the people saying that states aren't needed. Then that means to remain status. If you don't have a state. Udi Passe Davis Juris is a principle of customary law, customary international law. That serves to preserve the boundaries of colonies emerging as states. Originally applied to establish the boundaries of decolonized territories in Latin America. Udi Passe Davis Juris have become a rule of wider application, notably in Africa. The policy behind principle has been explained by the International Court of Justice. Okay? It's pretty much saying the same thing. Okay, so, I just like, just wanted to share this, this real brief video, uh, and, and just real quick. Even though we've been colonized, this landmass has been colonized. The whole point of Udi Passe Davis Juris. Is saying that even though you're colonized. In order to get independence, sovereignty, et cetera. You must establish a state. Right? Just not only a state of mind. We're talking about state effects, state constitution, state government, state flag, state symbol. State officials, et cetera. Um, so even though. These imaginary lines of the colonizer. Have seemed to take effect. It's the same imaginary lines or boundaries lost to latitude. That anybody on earth must use. In order to decolonize themselves. Okay, so there is no more claiming the whole empire. And, you know, under families, stuff like that. There is no more of that. That's, that's, this is the post-empire era, if you will. So, um, being that this is all about the balance of powers, statehood. Uh, I just wanted to share, uh, this quick video. Um, in regards to Udi Passe Davis Juris and how important it is to follow the laws. Uh, and not just go out and do our own thing, okay? Um, and, and one more point, in order to. Uh, well, I, I'll save that for another video. So, um, I just wanted to drop this quick gem on you guys, you know? Be on the lookout for more short, quick videos, alright, peace.
Alright, thank you, head of state, Akil Bay of Maroue State Government. Alright, just dropping some knowledge on us about Udi Passe Davis Juris, right? Uh, keep it in mind that Maroue State Government. Map. Maroue State Government have become a successor receiving state of this territory right here. So the head of state, Akil Bay, was telling you that he took over the Udi Passe Davis Juris. Territory in the boundary lines, right? According to international law, he have a right to do that because he's decolonizing in a peaceful way, you see? He's invoking international law, so therefore the United States of America and the United States. And the governor of Indiana don't have no choice but to respect. The administrative process, right? That the state of Maroue State Government is taking because Maroue State Government is invoking what? International law and not no internal municipal law. Keep it in mind that municipal law is what? When you look it up, a contradistinction to international law, right? The state of Indiana, which is actually a charter, they don't like international law. Why is that? Because they know it starts to do what? It remove them from power. But yet, it ain't about removing them from power, it's about sharing a territory based in jurisdiction. The Moors should be governing Moors. Americans should be governing Americans. Indians should be governing Indians. However, when you start talking about subject matter jurisdiction, dealing with civil and criminal jurisdiction. That's when the colonies get upset because they know that you have the power of your pen. Because you have what's called the original jurisdiction, right? You have subject matter jurisdiction over any dispute between a Moore and an American. Your court is the proper venue. So therefore, if they can't control courts and they can't control the laws of that land, then they get just a little, uh, upset, you see? In other words, they don't want to share, do they? But yet, we shared our land with them after seventeen seventy-six, didn't we? When they declared their independence, they immediately became states. Then Sidi Mohammed recognized them in December seventeen seventy-seven. Sidi Mohammed turned around and signed a treaty with them seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven. Allowed them refuge, right? Cause he showed clemency for them and that thirteen colonies, cause they didn't want to be British no more. Now they're Americans, cause Sidi Mohammed allowed them to be Americans. United States of America wouldn't even exist today. Without Sidi Mohammed, the Moroccan Sultan recognizing there are thirteen colonies. There were thirteen colonies could become states located where? In the Empire of Morocco. So therefore, at best, the United States of America is in a free association with an independent state. Coming called the Empire Morocco. That must be understood, right? So that's Udi Passe Davis Juris, okay? Now listen, we gotta talk about Morocco just a little bit, okay? Why is that? Alright. Okay. We gotta talk about Mohammed the Fifth. Why are we talking about Mohammed the Fifth? Because he himself invoked Udi Passe Davis Juris. You see, because he started proclaiming his own independence and after that. He had a constitution, had his three branches of government, along with his monarchy. And he proclaimed his little provincial state as the Kingdom of Morocco. Alright, so let's learn a little bit about Mohammed the Fifth. Because I need Moors, Americans, and Moroccans in the West, Moroccan nationals. To understand that even the Sultan turned king had to follow the instructions of international law. You see? Alright.
From the top, brother, uh, Drake. Proclamation of Independence of Morocco. The proclamation of independence of Morocco. Was translated as the Manifesto of Independence of Morocco. Uh, or proclamation of January eleventh nineteen forty-four. Is a document in which Moroccan nationalists called for the independence of Morocco in its national entirety. Under Mohammed the Fifth, Ben Youssef, as well as the installment of a democratic constitutional government to guarantee the rights of all segments of society. January eleven is an official government holiday in Morocco.
You see that? So even Mohammed the Fifth. Was declaring his independence and putting it in with the expectation that next, he put together what? A government, constitutional government based on what? Democracy, right? See that? He gonna put together a democratic government so he can have his independence. So therefore, first he had to do what? Have a proclamation, i.e. what? Declaration of Independence. You following me so far? This is Mohammed the Fifth, man, okay? Listen. Context, let's listen, alright.
On November eighth nineteen forty-two, allied forces landed in Morocco. French protectorate in Morocco sensed the nineteen twelve Treaty Affairs during Operation Torch. Free France then retook control of the largely collaborationist colonial administration sympathetic to. Uh, Felipe Pertain, which bodied well for Moroccan nationalists. Sultan Mohammed the Fifth of Morocco, who was a de facto prisoner of the colonial administration. Though he had made to, he had made no public gesture of sympathy toward Nazi Germany. And had protected Moroccan Jews from anti-Semitic policies. Received confirmation from President Franklin D Roosevelt at the Casablanca Conference of January nineteen forty-three. That the US would support the independence of Morocco when the war was over. On December eighteenth nineteen forty-three, those who were still free among the, who, those who were still free among. The old guard of the National Party outlawed by the French administration in nineteen thirty-seven. Whose previous leaders such as, um, Al-Awafasi, Mohammed Hassan, Il Wazini, Wazani. Et al, were either imprisoned or in exile, organized in a secret conference in. Rabat, uh, what is that? Uh, Rabat, um, to found the Istikhlal Party. The proclamation of independence of Morocco was originally drafted by Ahmad Il Hamani Katat. And Ahmad Bahini, attorneys of the, uh, attorneys of the party and revised and amended by their colleagues. On January eleventh nineteen forty-four, with the outcome of World War Two still uncertain to all. But the most perceptive sixty-six Moroccans signed the public proclamation demanding an end to colonialism. And the reinstatement of Morocco's independence in enormous risk at the time. The main nationalist leaders of all origins united around the proclamation of independence. Forming a real political movement representative of a wider segment of Moroccan society, urban and rural. They decided together to ally themselves with Sultan Mohammed the Fifth, to whom they submitted their demand. Among the signatories were members of the resistance, symbols of a free Morocco. And people who would become key figures in the construction of the new Morocco.
Alright, so Mohammed the Fifth is fighting for his independence to decolonize, right? He had a declaration of independence in the nineteen forties. He's fighting, right? Listen.
Text of the proclamation of independence of January eleven presented to Sultan Mohammed.
Alright, so he wrote in Arabic, right? But here's the English. Just a moment. Okay, this is his declaration of independence, alright? This is a Sultan writing. And these Moors think that they don't need no declaration independence. These Moors think they don't need no constitution, but yet the Sultan is taking these steps. Go ahead, good brother Drake.
Praise God for the Istikhlal Party, which is composed of members of the former nationalist party as well as independent persons. Whereas Morocco has always constituted a free and sovereign state. And that it has held its independence through thirteen centuries up until the moment when. Under particular circumstances, a protectorate regime was imposed upon it. Whereas the regime's objective and purpose were to give Morocco a set of administrative, financial, and military reforms. Without impinging on the traditional sovereignty of the Moroccan people under the aegis of their king.
Pause, okay, so what is he talking about? He talking about the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve, right? And Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve talked about putting together a new regime, right? Com- comprising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms, right? So this is what he's talking about. He's talking about France is supposed to do their job, they didn't do it, okay? Start from here.
Whereas the regime's objective and purpose were to give Morocco a set of administrative, financial, and military reforms. Without impinging on the traditional sovereignty of the Moroccan people under the aegis of their king. Whereas under this regime, the authorities of the protectorate have replaced that system with the system of direct. And despotic rule for the benefit of the French colony, including the military and employees. In which Morocco only plays a minimal role. And in which the French authorities have not attempted to address the various needs of the different elements of the country. Whereas the French colony through the system has been able to take over all channels of power. As well as to appropriate and monopolize the country's resources to the detriment of its citizens. Whereas the regime has attempted through all possible means to break the unity of the Moroccan people. To prevent Moroccans from effectively participating in the governance of their country. And to, and to deprive them of every individual's civil liberty. Whereas the circumstances the world faces today are not those in which the protectorate was established. Whereas Morocco has participated significantly in the world wars next to the allied forces. With Moroccans having impressed everyone with their accomplishments in France, as well as Tunisia, Sicily, um. What is that?
Corsica.
Corsica, thank you, and Italy, and with the expectation that they will participate in other theaters as well. Particularly in the liberation of France. Whereas the allies who shed their blood for the cause of liberty stated in the Atlantic Charter. That all peoples have the right to self-determination, to govern themselves by themselves. And expressed recently at the Tahrir Conference, their resentment toward the doctrine that the mighty should dominate the weak. Whereas the allies expressed their support for Muslim peoples on multiple occasions. And have rendered independence to some of those whose past and present civilizations are less developed than Morocco's. Whereas the Moroccan nation, which is a harmonious union of its different elements. Feels what is rightfully its own in terms of rights. And what is upon it in terms of responsibilities within the country and beyond its borders under the patronage. Of its beloved king and profoundly appreciates the democratic liberties. Which are intrinsically consonant with our true religion, which has been the foundation of governance in fellow Islamic countries. Decides the following. First, to demand the independence of Morocco and the integrity of its territory under His Majesty the King Mohammed Ben Youssef. May God aid and glorify him. Second, to implore His Majesty to seek from the concerned states. The recognition and affirmation of this independence. And to sign treaties that define within the context of Moroccan sovereignty, the legitimate interests of foreigners in Morocco. Third, to request from the Moroccan regime to the states the acceptance of the Atlantic Charter. And participation in the reconciliation conference. Fourth, to request from His Majesty to include under his patronage. That the reform movement that Morocco depends on from within. And to bring the attention to the creation of a consultative political system similar to the governments. In Arab Islamic countries in the Far East. similar to the governments in Arab Islamic countries in the Far East, in which the rights of all, of all components of the people and all its social classes are ensured and in which the duties of all are defined. Peace.
Alright, so Mohammed the Fifth wrote his own declaration of independence, right? Right? Text. Text of the proclamation of independence, right? So, if the Sultan slash King had to do it, what makes the Moors, Americans think they don't have to follow the same procedures of law? Why haven't we done it? But guess what? We're moving forward, right? We're following the instructions of international law, right? So these seven states right here, Moroccan states, we followed that same example, declaration of independence, right? Constitution, flag sealed for all seven of these states, right? And now we have an Empire of Morocco flag, right? We're, we're taking steps at bearing state advancement. Now we have our own empire flag, right? To represent what? All these seven states, right? These seven states come under the empire flag. But yet, these seven states, right, also have their own state, okay? Now we went over this, class one twenty-one. So those seven states, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have our own individual flag, but we also pay allegiance and recognition of the Empire of Morocco flag, right? For who? Moroccans, Moroccan nationals over here in the West, you see? But we needed what? What did, what did, what did Mohammed the Fifth do? He established what? A declaration of independence. This is Anpack's Declaration of Independence. This is a very similar declaration of independence that other Moroccan states have too. Who else has a similar declaration of independence? Well, these seven states, right? Similar declaration of independence. All of them declared their independence, right? So what does our independence matter say, right? We're following instructions, this is the same thing Mohammed the Fifth had to do, right? Okay, this is just a one pager, I'll read it. Declaration of Independence. "We the Moroccan nationals of Alodhi Moors Pariaum Antti Colorado hereby declare our independence from the United States of America. We declare that our modern Moroccan state and its authorized Moors government hereby reject the United States of America's colonial jurisdiction as being trustees or administrators in the Empire of Morocco. We the Moors shall no longer consent or acquiesce to the political or juridical de facto claims made by the United States Digital Columbia or its chartered colonial states in the Empire of Morocco. Whereas we declare our right to self-determination without the prior consent of the foreign United States International Organization. Moreover, it is important to note that the term Moroccan, Moors, and Moor shall mean the same. Also, the term Moroccan government or Moors government shall mean the same. Whereas the Moors subjects have returned to a Moroccan state government and hereby renounce unequivocally the naturalized citizenship status of both the United States of America and the United States pursuant to the Full Force Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six, Articles twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-four, and the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Articles seven, eight, and fifteen, Paragraph one, and the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh six, preamble, Articles one oh five, one oh six, and one twenty-three, and Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five, Articles one fifty-five, seventy-three, and one oh three, the International Court of Justice case concerning France versus United States of America of nineteen fifty-two, Pages two oh one to two oh three, United Nations Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty, Articles one through seven, the Vienna Convention on the Law Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, Articles sixteen, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and UN Resolution twenty-six, twenty-five of nineteen seventy, preamble and principles amongst other themes. Whereas the representatives of the states solemnly publish and declare that our modern Moroccan state and its nationals shall have the substantive treaty right to invoke the triple principle of sovereignty, independence, the interior domain, and economic liberty without any inequality. Wherefore, we the Moors hold these truths to be self-evident that the executive, legislative, and judicial authority of our Moroccan government have derived its full powers from the consent and vote of our nationals and shall have full powers to ratify treaties, enact Moroccan laws, levy taxes, govern the great enterprise, govern over foreigners, act in self-defense, and act as an independent state. In conclusion, we declare to decolonize, organize, and unite our efforts in good faith with our modern Moroccan states and form the United States of Morocco as one sovereign state throughout the Empire of Morocco, signed by we the people Ashay." Now that's a declaration of independence. What is it about? It's about we the people, it's about the territory, the state. And not only just telling the world about our feelings, we start invoking law, substantive law through our treaty language, you see? You combine that in your declaration of independence, that way when people read it, they don't say, "Well, that's just your opinion." No, 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 you invoke law, the strict sense of law, substantive law, the black letter of the law, you see? That's a declaration of independence, alright? So with that being said, a, as I start to close out, you must understand, Moors. We as Moors have to start understanding that, that the colonists, the colonists understand that we have to get into a status of the principles of good neighborliness in international law, right? So we start to rise up, and we establish our states, and we start to recognize the Empire of Morocco flag. You must understand, and you must respect, other peoples' flags and their jurisdiction as well. We have to become good neighbors, alright? We'll talk about this more in the next class. I am with that. Islam.
Islam.